Ready and wired, Mr. Dubé.
Merci, Monsieur Lemaire.
Thank you, Your Worship, Councilors, Mesdames et Messieurs.
Municipal Chambers and those watching on Rogers' Community Channel, good evening, bonsoir. Your Worship, we have much for which to be thankful here in Moncton. Those who came before us built this great city, and we are all now entrusted with carrying the torch forward in a responsible, sustainable, and strategic manner. We are before council tonight, Your Worship, to discuss a potential project that is very strategic, not only one that will preserve our place in Atlantic Canada as the sports and entertainment capital, but also strengthen our position and be a true game changer for our city, southern New Brunswick, and indeed, the province of New Brunswick. We have in common, and that is to make Moncton the best it can be. The proposed downtown centre has the potential to help us do just that, not simply on its own, but rather when taken in the context of everything else we do as a community through an incredible array of partnerships with citizens, community groups, institutions like University of Moncton, and Magma, and our vibrant and diverse private sector. It is a rare occurrence in one's life and career to be involved in determining the feasibility of a project like the proposed downtown centre. These are typically once-in-a-lifetime opportunities, and I'm frankly proud and honoured to be before you this evening, City Council, with some of the staff involved. We are not here to advise you to proceed with the project. This is for council to decide. This is this is and always will be driven process. While we have completed a significant amount of due diligence already, there are a number of key steps to be taken over the next 15 months before council can consider awarding a contract to make that project a reality. Ce soir, je vous présente-
This evening, I'd like to give you an overview of what we've done thus far and what the future holds for us. This is the most important project ever considered by the city of Moncton. The multifunctional centre is one of the priorities of council, amongst others, including the reduction of the infrastructure deficit.
Your Worship, council has many priorities, amongst which are reducing the infrastructure deficit and the construction of the downtown centre. One cannot discuss one without considering the other, nor can we ignore the many other municipal services and priorities the city delivers. This project is not a done deal. I doubt anyone would want council to approve it at any cost.
Sometimes people hear about the cost of investment, and they hesitate. They worry about the impact that this will have on their property tax. And this is a legitimate concern. We're very vigilant, and we will do our due diligence, our research, and we will build key partnerships with the private sector to reduce the impact on the taxpayer.
Your Worship, our strategy is twofold in terms of revitalising our downtown. We need to increase the number of residents who live in our downtown, and that is starting to gain traction based on the number of new high-density projects already underway downtown, and with several more to come very shortly, and one we just heard about tonight. We need to build the multipurpose centre, or secondarily, we need to build the multipurpose downtown centre which will serve as a catalyst for downtown revitalisation. Why?
Why this downtown multifunctional centre? Secondly, our existing infrastructure, the Colosseum, no longer meets our needs of today.
Meet our needs anymore, or those of our partners in the sports and entertainment business.
So the objective here is to take the advantage of this new building downtown in order to revitalise the growth in the sector while meeting the needs by replacing the Colosseum.
This project is an opportunity for city council and the community to be visionary. The decision to restore the Capital Theatre was not unanimous in the 1990s either, but look at what it has done and what it continues to do for the cultural vitality of our community and the downtown experience. This potential strategic project represents a significant public-private partnership and invests a linchpin in terms of our strategy to strengthen the downtown core and to grow Moncton's reputation, the Atlantic Canada's capital, sports and entertainment city. Your Worship, please look closely at this picture. Our downtown shows so much potential, given this current low density and proliferation of surface parking lots. Imagine what it would look like if all those surface parking lots were occupied by revenue and job-generating buildings containing offices, retail and cultural spaces, institutional and community spaces, and multi-level parking structures. While parking is an important asset, it isn't a major revenue generator for the city. Residential and commercial developments are. And while we are on the topic of parking, that issue has been raised by some people as an impediment to constructing a downtown centre. No doubt that if the project becomes a reality, the city and its residents will undergo a cultural shift in terms of parking. Other cities across Canada have successfully built and operated such centres in their downtowns, and at the same time ensured public access. Council has been setting the stage over the past few budget cycles by increasing parking rates to make it feasible for the private sector to build parking structures. Secondly, we intend to make the downtown centre a major public transit hub, making it more prominent and efficient as a facility. Thirdly, we intend to propose a downtown shuttle which will navigate the length of Main Street so people parking at one end can easily get to the other end. And we all know that we have lots of parking downtown already, more than other comparable cities in Canada. Finally, when such buildings are in the downtown, like in Halifax, St John, Montreal, Welf, London, to name but some, people expect to pay for parking or will take public transit. So the downtown centre, Your Worship, will drive more clients to our Kodiak transport service. Your Worship, the downtown is important. It represents the heart of our community, the centre of commerce, and an important property tax revenue generator. I don't think many would argue with the fact that our downtown needs some enhanced tenderloving care. And the city of Moncton has a significant regulatory and facilitating role to play in terms of downtown development.
The downtown density, be it through businesses or residential development, becomes revenues for the city, which ensures, which helps ensure the offer of services, improved services.
In ourselves, what we envisage in part of this particular project? We're talking about a facility that would accommodate 7,500 to 9,000 seats in a Colosseum-type structure, restaurants are restaurants, an NHL-sized skating rink, hockey rink, NBA court, meeting spaces, outdoor public spaces, cultural elements, residential, community, retail, and commercial uses. Your Worship, let's quickly discuss how we ended up with a purchase option on the Highfield Square site. In 2009, a location analysis identified seven potential sites in the downtown. The task force, co-chaired by councillor Brian Hicks and Mr. Jim Lockyer endorsed and emphasised a downtown location. In fact, this is one of the main recommendations from the Hicks-Lockyer task force. City council selected the Highfield Square site, as was announced on March 19, 2012, after a unanimous vote by city council in a special public meeting. During the selection process, the shortlisted sites were evaluated based on the following criteria: site characteristics, location and transportation, cost of acquiring the land, urban context and physical elements, and lastly, economic impact and synergy with the downtown.
So the closure of Highfield Square gave council a unique opportunity to acquire this property in order to build their downtown centre.
Take a look at the site with the proposed downtown centre superimposed on it. The site features 11 acres for development, four of which are dedicated to the downtown centre itself. This leaves seven acres of available opportunity for the private sector. Once fully developed, this land could represent new developments worth a quarter of a billion dollars. Put another way, 200 to 250 million in potential new development on that site, including the downtown centre, which will surely trigger other developments on land surrounding the Highfields Square property. This has significant financial upsides for the city of Moncton if done right. Ultimately, this project could be a downtown destination village serving many, many needs, including our library, meeting space offering up seniors programming, among other things, the Moncton Sports Hall of Fame, apartments and condominiums, retail stores, restaurants, bars, and office space. Your Worship, this caricature was published by a local newspaper in April 2011. So here we are, two years later, still discussing the feasibility of the Perrova Centre. To put that into context, London's highly-successful Budweiser Gardens, in the heart of London's downtown, took three city councils and 10 years to get final approval. Legitimately, many residents and citizens are asking how much will this project cost? And what will be the impact on our taxes? Many are also saying, "Get on with it." "When are we breaking ground?" "What's the holdup?" "When will it open?"
Let's look at the steps we've gone through since 2009, and let's look at the necessary steps that we need to deliver on this project.
There are all the studies that we've actually undertaken since this thing in terms of due diligence. One here on the floor that won't fit on my desk here, but I'll put it up here for illustration purposes.
In 2009, a consultant was hired by municipal council to do a study, and he indicated the project was not only feasible but important to guarantee the role that Moncton has as an entertainment centre in Canada Atlantic. That was the feasibility study. At that time, the working group was created, co-chaired by councillor Hicks and Mr. Jim Lockyer, and they worked until March 2010 to present recommendations to council. By respecting several basic principles, the council accepted to continue on with the project. Between the spring of 2010 and the spring of 2012, city staff prepared, amongst others, requests for funding that were presented to the different governments. And this document right here represents the submission made to the government on this project. We came to an agreement with the Wildcats, who would be a main renter, with a business plan that would show you that this was with a financial plan for 30 years that demonstrate that the project is very feasible.
...7th, as well as August 22, 2011, regarding a 30-year financial plan. An overview was also given to newly-elected officials in June of 2012. In June of 2011, we held a blue-sky session, attended by residents who provided feedback on what they were expecting to see in a downtown multipurpose centre. Further, as part of our due diligence, we conducted environmental assessments. This is a copy of the report, Gemtech and the environmental assessments. Phase one was done in March 2010 on various shortlisted sites. Two environmental assessments were undertaken in April 2012 for the Highfield Square property. Once we secured the option to purchase the land, we are in the process of completing one more environmental assessment of the property before finalising a recommendation to city council for its acquisition this coming June. In December of 2012, we reached out to the private sector with a request for qualifications, an RFQ, from firms or consortia interested in partnering with the city on this potentially game-changing project. Your Worship, the final project's scope will only be determined once council has considered the responses to the request for proposals from all or some of the RFQ proponents. However, it is important for our purposes this evening to share one possible scenario with council and the public to give everyone a sense of the magnitude of this project. Again, this is just a scenario. Deal will only be known following the completion of the RFP process and negotiations with the federal and provincial governments, DMCI, and the hoteliers. I think it's important, when you look at this slide, to recognise that when you look at large projects in Canada funded by other levels of government, especially the projects of this size, senior levels of government rarely offer up more than 50% of the funding on a large project. And I can, we can point, just in this province, to Turtle Creek, our project here in Moncton. We can point to the water supply in St John and others. So in this model, and again, it's only a scenario, just to give you an appreciation of the magnitude of this and the complexity of such a project. This shows about 50% of the money coming from senior levels of government, and 50% of the money come from the local community, from the city, from local associations, from ordinary taxpayers, ordinary residents who would actually make a donation. So this model basically says the project would cost $95.4 million. It would be funded, almost $24 million from the feds, $24 million from the province. We would launch a capital campaign of $10 million to raise money from local citizens in the community, enterprises, you know, business owners. And the city would take on a debt of $37.7 million. But recognise that downtown Moncton-Saint-Tribut Inc. and the hoteliers, and perhaps other private sector players may commit to a certain amount to offset that particular amount of money, right? That $37.7 million. So when you look at this scenario, it would require $37.7 million plus the land costs from the city of Moncton, total $7.7 million in actual exposure to the city, right? Last December, council approved a capital budget that includes a $65 million investment from the city. In 2012, council approved a $43.5 million contribution based on what we thought we knew then, right? Of course, the reason the numbers change year to year, and we are now talking about $37.7 million instead of $65 million, council approved four months ago, is because the federal government, in its most recent budget, announced there will be money for sports facilities under the New Building Canada Fund, a fact confirmed in writing by our MP, Robert Gogan, who is anxious to work with Your Worship and city council on this project. So given the fund criteria will be announced next year, the timing is perfect in relation to our proposed project. And I would be remiss in failing to point out again that DMCI and the Greater Moncton Hoteliers are prepared to consider providing over $2.5 million in total over 15 years. While DMCI and the hoteliers are not providing capital contributions to the project directly, in other words, a direct capital contribution, they are prepared to consider providing an annual contribution against the operating costs of that facility, including the debt financing. So if we applied all of those monies that DMCI and the hoteliers are prepared to consider to our debt repayments, that would bring the $37.7 million loan to an effective loan of $28 million. That's a significant difference than where we were four months ago, or even a year ago. So when one considers the Hicks-Lockyer task force recommendation and that deal-breaker recommendation where it said $25 million is our maximum in borrowing against an $85 million project in $2010, we are clearly respecting the spirit and intent of that specific task force recommendation when one also considers construction inflation has been estimated at 3% since then. So in other words, when you look at construction inflation, it would be clear, it's clear to me that $25 million in 2010 is worth about $30 million today. And when you look at the application of the funding from DMCI and the hoteliers against a $37.7 million loan, it brings it down to below the level that was recommended back in 2010. So that, but that is only one scenario. We don't know what the scenario is going to be at the end of the day. What we do know is that we have a project, we have a vision. Council has made this a priority. It's now up to us to take this to the next steps, go through the next steps and see whether this thing can actually work for the community. Further, we propose to purchase the land without taking on debt, rather funding it through cash and cash reserves by the time the building opens. And we're already on track to do that. Again, this is only one possible scenario. We're trying to give everyone an idea on the scope and magnitude of the project, and we're working to reduce the city's piece of the pie. Two partners have stepped up and are contributing. The hoteliers and DMCI have committed. We'd like to commit more. But, and those discussions are going to be for another day, and once we know exactly what we want, what we need in terms of making this project viable. And we'll only know those final numbers when, once the RFP process is complete next year. And then we can precisely determine what we need to make it work from our partners locally, provincially, and federally. But tonight, Your Worship, you know, as you have said in the past, and certainly our deputy mayor has said and other members of council, you know, the federal government and the provincial government are looking to the city to say, "What's your priority and what's your ask?" Well, this will give you an issue of the ask. This will give them a sense of what we're looking for, and so we can start working and having a more serious dialogue about that. I'd now like to speak about the Moncton Colosseum. Moncton has a great reputation with promoters and the public here insofar as the sports and entertainment capital of Atlantic Canada. However, that reputation is slipping because of the current limitations of the Moncton Colosseum. The problems are numerous, with the biggest problems being a ceiling that is too low, lack of air conditioning, and inadequate concession space and concourses. As a result, acts that wanted to come here recently, like Saint-Denis du Soleil, Carrie Underwood, and Brad Paisley, to name but three, could not and would not because they could not fit their stage in our building. Concertors are not getting the full experience despite paying full ticket value, given many of the shows at Moncton are scaled back. That's our reality right now at the Colosseum. If the downtown centre is not built, we will need to upgrade the Colosseum to modern show standards, and that will cost upwards of $40 million. And Your Worship, I want to advise council that a copy of the engineering study on the Colosseum substantiating those costs have been provided to council in our mailboxes. That being said, we are not proposing to abandon the Colosseum at all. Rather, we want to repurpose it. Council made a very strategic decision to dedicate $200,000 in this year's budget to undertake a study as to what uses the Colosseum could provide, while at the same time examining what recreational and leisure services could be provided to the residents of the north end of Moncton via an expansion of the Evergreen Park School through a partnership with the school district and citizens residing in the north end of Moncton. We are in the process of tendering that study as we speak, the results of which will be known sometime this fall. Through that study, however, we will not only reexamine the Evergreen Park School project, but also examine the feasibility of repurposing the Colosseum as a community centre and taking a portion of the parking acreage around the Colosseum and lands fronting on Killam and using them for residential and commercial purposes, thus creating medium and high-density residential options for many user classes, including seniors in a centrally located, easily accessible, and walkable neighbourhood. Its prime location next to Centennial Park and Willard Boulevard makes this location a potentially very attractive neighbourhood building project that could also serve as part of the wanted community centre in the north end of the city and create new tax revenue for the city. We would keep the ice and continue to rent out our trade show space at the Colosseum, given it is not financially feasible to construct cavernous trade show space in our proposed downtown centre. Your Worship, council will be faced with several key decisions, decision points over the next couple of months. And the project is now at a very critical stage. This slide highlights the main decision points for council where at any interval, council will decide whether the project can move forward or not. The project is like building a house. First, you need a piece of land, and council has an opportunity to purchase the Highfield Square site. Before it makes that decision, council, on behalf of the citizens of Moncton, will receive the final pieces of information needed to make an informed decision on exercising the option to purchase the Highfield Square land. That is a go, no-go decision. If it is a go, council will have an opportunity this fall to release a request for proposals, an RFP, to all or some of the RFQ proponents. Once the RFP submissions have been issued, council will again have the opportunity to decide whether negotiations can proceed with a selected private sector partner. Once negotiations are complete, council will have this final chance to accept the project and contract it or end it. Once a contract is awarded, construction will begin, and we anticipate if all goes well and council agrees in the final analysis, the downtown multipurpose centre could open in the fall of 2016 or early 2017. Your Worship, I mentioned earlier that council issued an RFQ late this year, late last year, sorry. Three submissions were received and are currently being analysed. And I'll go through them one by one, and these are not in any order of preference or anything like that, they're just at random. These are the three we've received. First of all, Ellis Dawn. Ellis Dawn is one of Canada's largest, most impressive construction companies. They have partnered with Global Spectrum. Global Spectrum are the owners, is a company owned by the same people who own the Philadelphia Flyers and the Spectrum in Philadelphia. Global Spectrum is a professional property management firm that specialises in operating sports and entertainment facilities across the United States and in Canada. These are very impressive companies. BBB Architects are also a very impressive architectural firm. They are known worldwide for the design of sports facilities of various sorts, including properties such as we're talking about here tonight. Southwest Properties Limited is a property development company that's based in Atlantic Canada, a very significant one. Have made investments all over Atlantic Canada and other parts and have a very strong reputation in this area. Dufferin Financial Services are experts in financing these kinds of projects and are part of the consortium. Some of the projects this group has been involved in: Budweiser Gardens in London, Ontario, the Rogers Centre in Trello, and the Red Ball Centre, Internet Centre, right here in Moncton, New Brunswick. Next up, Bird Construction. Bird Construction is a national construction firm, very well-known, very strong expertise in these kinds of projects. They have partnered with Armco Capital, another very well-known financial services firm who pulls together financing for these types of projects. SMG, SMG is a very well-known property management company across the country, operates many, many facilities like the proposed downtown centre in all parts of Canada and are very good at what they do. Populous and StanTech are combining together to provide the architectural and engineering expertise associated with this particular project, working directly with Bird Construction. Some of the projects that they have, and these are only a few, I'm only listed a few for each of the proponents: Thunderbird Sports Centre, where the Olympics in 2010 were held in Vancouver; the Trout Lake Arena in Vancouver, B.C., and of course, the Ford Centre in Evansville, Indiana, one that we've actually looked at ourselves internally. Finally, La Rienot de Canade Inc. and Eventco. I think everyone will recognise that name. La Rienot de Canade Inc. is the company that owns, operates basically three lines of business. One is the Montreal Canadiens, two is the Bell Centre, and three is Eventco. Eventco is the company that we deal with a lot as a city because there are concert promoters, there are event promoters. They're the ones that brought Nickelback here last year in partnership with Live Nation, for example. So these people are in the sports and entertainment business. So these people are in the entertainment, sports and entertainment business, they actually book acts into the facilities across Quebec and eastern Canada, and generally partner very well on an ongoing basis with Live Nation, Canada's largest and most important event promoter. Projects they have been involved in in the past, in Clintor in Montreal, the Bell Sports Complex, and the proposed Place Bell in Laval, Quebec, which is now under development. So your worship, since the end of March, the internal committee, a staff committee chaired by myself, has been evaluating the RFQ submissions, and I can tell you that so far, we're quite pleased and impressed with the content.
We're respecting the regular process, and we'll present to the council the results of the evaluation methods. At that time, the council will have to take one of two decisions. One, accept or refuse the current recommendation of the evaluation committee, and second, to give the authorization to the team to go to the next of putting together a request for proposals.
The final pieces of the puzzle will be coming together and presented to city council and the citizens of Moncton. The RFQ results will be presented publicly on May 6th. On that same day, our CFO, John Martin, will publicly present the updated thirty-year financial plan. This means the project impact on the city's overall budget, planning strategies and the debt ratio. In essence, it will answer the main question on everyone's mind, can we afford this? Further, and I can share this with you now, the thirty-year plan will include in excess of a fifty percent reduction in the city's infrastructure deficit, council's number one priority, while at the same time ensuring we can build a downtown centre and afford to do it. As I said in my opening comments, we want to clear the downtown centre without taking into account the need to reduce our infrastructure deficit. Again, we cannot and will not ignore other municipal services and priorities established by council.
In 2011, we finished a study on economic spinoffs of this centre. To ensure the viability of our information, we asked for an independent review, and an update was effectuated by Pierre-Marc Deschamps and David Hamilton, which will be presented to the Montreal council in the beginning of June before a decision will be made on the acquisition of the property on Highfield Square.
Minister Flaherty provides hope in that this project may apply for federal provincial support under a future cost-share program. We are exploring that matter through discussions with our MP, Robert Goga, and provincial elected and appointed officials. We are currently in discussion with these and other partners to secure longer-term agreements as we hope to move to longer-term agreements, for example, with DMCI and the Hoteliers Association than the current commitments indicate from those organisations. I would now, your worship, like to touch on a public consultation process. Public consultation has been ongoing since 2009, and we will continue to do so as the project moves forward. So as you can see on the slide, you know, we engaged a citizen survey in June 2009. We'd had the Hicks-Lockyer report that was tabled in March 2010. The Urban Quarterly talked about the project in June of 2011. We had a blue sky event. In April 2012, we had a, we revealed some renderings that four architectural firms prepared in partnership with DMCI, which is an important exercise. And as you mentioned earlier, your worship, this month, many council members heard from residents during the election campaign. And those informal conversations, just like media coverage, are opportunities to get feedback and get an overall sense of the community's feeling about the project and encourage ongoing dialogue. We even recently used the recent home show at the Colosseum to engage people about the project. No surprise it's there. Frankly, people were asking, when is it going to be built? When is it going to open? What's it going to cost? Where will I park? Will there be outdoor public spaces? And what will be in the building? These are all typical questions, and they were sort of, you know, not questions that we would get out of a process like that. In the coming weeks and months, our goal with regards to public consultation and information is to provide our citizens with a complete picture, as well as provide opportunities for the public to participate and learn more about the project, and we are frankly on track to complete the puzzle. While we are still ironing out the details of some of the items listed here, suffice to say that we encourage residents and all stakeholders alike to stay tuned, to keep checking our website and to meet the outlets as more and more information is released and to provide us with their feedback. Once the thirty-year plan is presented publicly, we'll be coming back to council with a detailed public consultation plan. So to recap, your worship, you know, we have performed a lot of due diligence. You know, you can see the number of reports that we've prepared in this context, including assessments of the Colosseum, you know, the market analysis, feasibility of the sports centre, you know, the preliminary cost report, the task force report, and of course, the Grand Thornton report that was part of our business plan that we submitted to the federal government. So we've done a lot of work in terms of due diligence. We still have a lot of work to do in terms of cost sharing. We still have to get to an RFP process in order to determine how this, what our private partners are prepared to do and at what price, right? We're encouraged by the fact that we have quality RFQ submissions to work from. That's an encouraging sign to have companies like L'Arino de Canadien, Eventco, Bird Construction, and Ellis Dawn is very encouraging at this stage of the game. So we have some players that we can play with. The question is, what are the rules? And what's it going to cost? You know, we need to have public input, information and input. You know, this is one of the first times where we explain publicly the whole process and all the detail, all the details, you know, all the deals associated with our due diligence and what's been done to date. I think some people out there believe that we've been sitting idly by at City Hall and not doing a lot, and that's quite far from the truth, as you can see. Council has made this a priority, has been so now for the last four or five years, and there's been a lot of work by the previous council and this current council. You know, we need some key decisions by council. You know, this is not a done deal, but council is driving this process, right? And we're following its orders and its instructions as we go along. So we'll not do this project at any cost, I'm sure, but I think we do have to complete our due diligence, and there's an end line in sight. I think within, over the next fifteen months, if we all work hard, work diligently on this, we should be able to put council in a position where it can make a final decision. Thank you. Merci.